I earned commercial last year in Boston. Last version, the last version I heard from her saying. And I'm leaving every one of them.
I need to harvest that. You don't know my story. I don't need to know what you're talking about.
I don't need to know. You don't need to do anything about yourself. You don't need to. Come back and say something. Trade up. He doesn't like the working.
No, but I don't have Facebook, so I don't want my stuff on. I don't even know what I'm doing. Let me know. Can it be a week? Luckily, I still got friends there. My charger because my son.
Because my daughter's charger besides.
Anyway, this is, this is, this is how I.
This just looks like an old, uh.
Head range.
It's all, uh.
Need others.
But. Aaron, you're not, you're not alone. We got followed by the ropes over here. Way back. Yeah. Stand for the plat.
I'd like to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. A nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to start off by saying that Mr. Schusda is excused from tonight's board meeting. I'd like to take a moment of silence for the following individuals. Frederick Franklin Campbell, a 1943 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Gerard Galpin, a 1961 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Sean P. Cleary, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Anthony S. Cordon, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We have one presentation this evening. Um, I'd like to invite up the North Star Innovators, uh, to give us their presentation on, on what they're doing.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to share with you the Innovators, the North Star Innovators program, and we've brought some of our innovators with us here tonight. My name is Colleen O'Connor, and I teach fifth grade at Fox Middle.
And I'm Steve Bacon. I teach sixth grade at Gillette Road.
We have Connor Boyle. Ira Deal.
And.
They'll be, they'll be speaking in a couple. Start off when, when Steve and I started planning with Mr. Leahy, Mr. Law, and Mrs. Wilczynski. When we started to plan, we tried to say, well, what, what do we want to accomplish here? Other than mine and Steve's love of science, I guess I'll have to just say it. And, and of teaching and helping our students love that as well. So we decided that we wanted to provide students with an opportunity to engage in STEM challenges and to make the program available to as many students as we could. And then we wanted to encourage their interest in the STEM discipline, but also to provide them opportunities to work as a team, which we know isn't anything, whether it's STEM or not. We've had two sessions, and so far in session one, 78 students have participated, and 84 students have participated in session three. We wanted to thank, um, some engineering folks that have been helping us. They're from Saab USA, and they volunteered to come every session. They, they show up and they work with the kids, um, and, and these are their names. But you can see some of them in the pictures here. They, they don't just watch, they, they help. And they, they guide the kids and answer their questions and figure out why the Sphero's aren't working. So our first session, we engaged with the most in the CNY bridges, build them and bust them. And I'm not sure exactly which was much, was more fun, but we did build bridges and we worked within the parameters of the competition. And so what you see in these pictures on the left-hand side are our students creating bridges, first by, by making a design on paper, following the parameters of the contest. And then they would take small pieces of balsa and make the bridges parts and put them together. And, um, it was, it was really fun, but it was. And then we busted them to see if they were worthy and how our, our instruction had going. So here's an example of where we were busting them at Gillette. Mr. Bacon was attaching weights until they. And then we chose six teams to take to the competition. So we gave every student that participated a chance to build bridges with a team. But then we, we felt we could take six teams to the competition. And of those six teams, two of our teams placed third and fourth in structural efficiency for category. Session two is the one we're just finishing and the one we're gonna demonstrate tonight. First, we use the Google CS First Coding Program, which is a free resource that gives kids an opportunity to learn block coding and to, um, practice their skills in coding. So, like, this is what they're doing. This is the ever-popular race game where you can race your elephant against your T-Rex. But you race it by programming directions for each of those into these blocks and, and a set of instructions. And so once our kids had mastered some of that, we switched to, oops, sorry. We switched to programming Sphero robots. And these robots were generously purchased by the district, which we totally appreciate. And the kids would make them do specific tasks and, um, and Connor is gonna demonstrate. Connor designed this program to. And he, the Sphero will narrate the, the. Technical difficulties. So the Sphero can do a, a range of things. It can move if you tell it to move in a certain way. It can speak if you tell it to speak. It can create animal sound. The kids had to adjust speed, had to direction. There we go. How this Pharaoh moves. It moves with great accuracy. Find different colors. Here's a few. My circles. We were a little limited when it came to circles, but that's what makes it fun. Who doesn't like challenges? Pharaoh can even do if statements, like if collides with wall, roll backwards for three seconds. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is the Sphero and one of the many fun things you can do in STEM Club. So when, when Connor says circles are not easy, you have to program angle, how far. It's not like do, make a circle. It's, it's a little more complicated than that. Session three, we have, it will begin right after, um, February break. And, uh, we again received great support from the district, and we, we purchased some Raspberry Pi processors, which the picture is up there. And those Raspberry Pi processors will allow us to, um, introduce an electronic component, and the kids will program flashing lights using similar block scratch type programming. And, uh, our Saab USA consultants were invaluable in helping us decide what we might need. We also would like to take some, some students to the Science and Engineering Fair at the end of March. And we have a couple of other projects up our sleeves. There's Mr. Bacon. That are not yet, we're still in the planning stages. Does involve stop animation. And then session four, pretty much all we know about this one so far is that it's gonna involve rockets and a most challenge. We've sort of built this as we go, matching our expertise, the help we get from the Saab folks and, and the kids, so that we can, their needs. Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Kyra Deal. I go to Roxborough Road Middle School. I am 11 years old. And since it was the beginning of the year, and I'm really interested in science and technology, I chose to join STEM. STEM is a really fun after-school activity. So far, I learned how to program a Sphero and a lot about coding. So I, STEM can help me with life because I learned to be persistent, to work with things that are new, and to be able to work with different people. Thanks for creating STEM.
Hello. My name is Connor Boyle, and I am 12 years old. I'm in sixth grade. And back in, I think it was like, maybe October, December, I can't remember. But, um, I heard about these, this new STEM Club. And I remember when I was in elementary school, there was these STEM Days, which were really fun because you, we, the weeks prior, you would make egg dropped. You would drop them, and then the big kids would launch rockets. And there was once even like a blow-up planetarium in the gym, and that was really fun. And, uh, and then I heard that something with the same name became a club. I was instantly like, yes. And I also like STEM Club because it's kind of science, which I already do like in school. But it's not just reading out of a textbook. It's hands-on. You get to program little tiny circles to move and do challenges. And that was very appealing to me. And, um, that's why I joined STEM Club.
Hello, my name is Reese Bodizy. I am in sixth grade. I go to Gillette Road Middle School, and I am 12 years old. I joined STEM mainly for the coding portion because I like playing video games, and I thought, why not create them? The STEM, the STEM Innovators Club helps you solve problems in figuring out, hey, what's causing this? Like, what's causing this thing to happen? Why is this not working? And that, to me, is a really useful skill, and so is the coding in general. Because tech, with technology becoming a greater and greater part of life, you should learn to be able to code and handle that technology. And, um, that's it.
Just kind of recap. Thank you so much for all the support we've gotten. Certainly, thank you a lot, Keith Martin, for getting us started last year on this program. And certainly Ms. Beach for providing us with this. We're very excited. Looking forward to do some great things and continuing to share those exciting times with you.
I have a question. How long are each session?
Till 4:15 till the late bus.
I mean, each, each segment.
Roughly eight to 10 weeks, depending on the school calendar.
I would just like to comment. Thank you for being here. The program is fairly new, and you're just sort of developing it as you go, as you said. And, um, I especially enjoyed listening to the students speak tonight. And I was impressed that you just talked from the top of your heads and you didn't, you didn't read it. So, um, wait your presentation, and thank you.
Okay, moving into the comments from the audience section. Just like to remind everyone that Board of Education meetings are meetings that the public is welcome to attend and observe, but do not, but not to participate. With that being said, the Board of Education welcomes your attendance at Board of Education meetings and allows for public comments. However, issues involving particular students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. Employee or student concerns should be addressed to the superintendent of the schools during regular business hours. You may also email your concerns to the board directly at c gibson@nscst.org. The district became aware over the weekend of an altercation between two students at the junior high school. As a result of this incident, the student disciplinary process has been initiated, and the matter has been reported to the Anadaga County Sheriff's Office, which is now involved in investigating this matter. The district has increased security within the building and will continue to cooperate with law enforcement to make sure that all appropriate action is taken against anyone who was responsible for inappropriate conduct towards others. The North Syracuse Central School District is committed to ensuring that all students are provided a safe and appropriate learning environment. Those that do not comply with this expectation will be dealt with appropriately. If you have signed in to speak, please remember that each speaker is allowed three minutes to present your remarks, and the Board of Education members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. So with that, I would like to welcome our first speaker is Phil Cleary.
Good evening. Thanks for, uh, having this opportunity to speak. My name is Phil Cleary. I'm a lifelong resident of the district. I'm a very proud graduate of our high school. And now a very, very happy staff member of the Early Education Program at Main Street. Like a lot of you people in this room, I've spent a lot of time in these seats over the years. For the past 23, 24 years, I've attended board meetings, um, and watched the processes that take place to make our district function. And I have to say, I know that an incredible amount of work goes into the budgeting process. We're in the midst of budget season. And I know how hard district administration works to try to keep the lights on and keep the wheels moving on our buses. But I think you'd all agree that although the lights are on and the wheels are moving, a lot of stuff just isn't happening that used to. Over the years, we've seen cuts of attrition, outright cuts. And each time these things happen and we move into our budgeting process, we ask ourselves, who is going to help us? And time and time again, we've noticed that Washington DC is not going to help us. And in many cases, most of the time, Albany is not going to help us. We end up with budgets that underfund us and put us in an increasingly difficult position each year. So the question is, who's going to help us? And I think the answer lies in this room. We must help ourselves. We must ask our taxpayers to help us rebuild what we have lost and bring back what we don't have any longer. The things our kids need, the things our staff needs. And we need programs reinstated, K through 12. We need our district office reinvigorated with more staff to help support teaching and learning. And we have to ask ourselves, what do we want our district to look like? We can't look outside any longer. We should still advocate, of course, but we can't let every year slip by without taking this responsibility on to our, on to ourselves. We are looking for leadership in this area. We're looking for district administration, school board members to speak out on this issue to help the district realize that there are things that we need. Last year, um, these seats were filled with our staffs presenting white papers indicating the things they needed to do their jobs well. And those, most of those things aren't happening, and we need them to happen. Um, I'm going to close by pointing out something that I'm sure you will be talking about later, and that's noticing that there are a couple of dozen people who are retiring. And you will reluctantly accept their resignations and wish them well in their well-earned retirement, as we all will. And I'll tell you, a lot of these people are my friends and dear colleagues who I have the greatest respect for. And my question is, as they go, will we be able to replace them all? Who will we bring in? And, um, how will we keep and attract new talent of the caliber of the people we're leaving? So, um, with that, I'll wrap up because I hear the beeper. But we look forward to hearing the, uh, the comments from our, our board on how they plan on fully funding our school. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Victoria Bullock-Krokowski. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for listening to the community members. My name is Victoria Bullock-Krokowski. Um, I was very proudly born and raised in North Syracuse District. I graduated in the class of 1989 from CNS. And I play in the symphony here. I absolutely love this area, and I'm here out of love for this district. I happened to be cleaning up my dinner table this evening, and I knew nothing about this situation when I saw on the news the video footage of the violence that happened at the junior high. And it took me right back to 1985, when I was a student at the junior high myself. I had the same sick feeling in my stomach when I saw the video. It was absolutely heartbreaking. Um, I can attest to you now, seeing that, in 32 years, nothing has changed. We need to understand that there's a serious problem with violence, particularly at the junior high school. It's serious, and it needs to be dealt with effectively. I, as a taxpayer, would be more than happy to pay extra taxes, to have more security guards outside of every single bathroom in that building. Anywhere where students are unattended, anywhere where things can happen that shouldn't be happening. There are too many good things happening in this district to have that kind of violence happening for anyone to see or for parents to be afraid to send their children to school there. I, for one, removed my child from the school last year. I had a son who went there, from the stories I heard. I couldn't send him there anymore, and I don't. He goes to a private school. My other children will not be attending junior high until I hear that things have changed there. But things have not changed in 32 years that I know of. There were fights every day at that school. I had to take different hallways, different doorways to get in to avoid the violence. There's a serious problem, and we need to have a serious solution that doesn't simply take us from one situation to the next with the hope that things will get better. They haven't gotten better. They're not going to get any better. And it's time to understand that and have a, a solution and a plan that really makes what we saw on the news not possible anymore because the students will be protected effectively with a security checkpoint coming in. If it takes longer for them to get to class, so be it. They need to be protected there. There's a serious problem. And so I beg of you, please, let's not have this be just another situation that we deal with as a situation. But look at the trajectory. It's not going away. Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to board committee reports. Uh, just that, uh, the Legislative Committee does have a meeting this Wednesday. We're working on scheduling some meetings with legislators where we can highlight our students. Okay? Oh, well, there is a legislative breakfast that's outside of my committee's purview. But yes, that's, uh, sponsored by Center New York School Boards on February 10th. That's this Saturday, isn't it? It's 2018, right? Okay, thank you. Mary, anything?
The Policy Committee will be meeting next Monday at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Comments? Um, just a quick note, um, on Wednesday, um, at the junior high school, if there's not a snow day with the storm coming, there is a, a film festival coming in, um, a BAM Film Festival that's gonna be in conjunction with the canteen and the students at the junior high. So anyone who can attend that, it looks to be a pretty.
So tonight must be the night for, uh, science STEM. I have some more good news with science that I'd like to share. The 2018 Science Olympia Regional Competition was held on Saturday, January 27th. And, uh, the CNS Science Olympia teams competed in the regional competition held at LeMoyne College. Out of a total of 37 teams competing, CNS Team Green finished third, and Team Blue finished 13th. Teams competed in 26 events, which covered topics related to earth science, biology, chemistry, physics, and technology. The teams medaled in 24 of the 26 events. And I have a list here of numerous winners, um, that we would like to congratulate. Based on the team's performance at the regional competition, they earned the opportunity to compete at the state-level competition, and that will be held at LeMoyne College on March 9th and 10th. And we wish them good luck. And we also thank the coaches that have put forth a lot of time and effort to help prepare these students. Mrs. Hager, Mrs. Madigan, Mr. Chapin, Mrs. Newmeister, Mrs. Felt, Mr. Lindsay, Mrs. Myers, and Mr. Minor. So congratulations, and we wish them well. And I'm not gonna comment on your comment about. We'll just keep our eye on the weather.
Okay, moving into routine action items. Are we okay to take A, B, C, D, and E as a group? Aboda? Anlin, all in favor? We do have one gift this evening. The CNS Optimist Club has donated 20 basketballs to the North Syracuse Central School District for the CNS Girls Basketball Program. The value of the basketballs is $479. So recommended action is to approve with gratitude the above gift. Aaron, Mike, all in favor? Uh, non-marketable surplus, nothing fun in there, Don, right? Just normal stuff. Our recommended board action is to declare the non-marketable surplus equipment to be disposed of. Jackie and George, all in favor? So we move on to retirements. There's quite a long list here, so, um, bear with me as I go through them. Uh, we'd like to congratulate the, congratulate the following. Corey Allen at KWS Bear Road Elementary, speech teacher, retires with 32 years of service. Tamara Barnhart-Duty from Main Street Special Education, retires with 32 years of service. Donna Blake from Roxborough Road Middle School, retires with 18 years of service. Wanda Buckley from Roxborough Road Middle School, who's a teaching assistant. Wanda Buckley, from Roxborough Road Middle School, who's a teaching assistant, retires with 20 years of service. Colleen Castello, from Bear Road Elementary Speech Teacher, retires with 31 years of service. Vincent Duchano, is a maintenance worker 2, retires with 20 years of service. Michael Fenland, from the Junior High School Special Education Teacher, retires with 33 years of service. Mildred Grace, from Cicero L, is a teacher who retires with 31 years of service. Maria Hanes, from Bear Road Elementary, who is a teacher, retires with 31 years of service. Susan Howahan, CNS Spanish Teacher, retires with 32 years of service. Susan Late, Cicero Elementary Teaching Assistant, retires with 29 years of service. Paula Lawton, from the Junior High School, who's a teaching assistant, retires with 25 years of service. Carly Lewis, a Cicero Elementary Teaching Assistant, retires with 29 and 1/2 years of service. Ronald Lindsay, a CNS Science Teacher, is retiring with 20 years of service. Gary Lipp, from Roxborough Road Middle School, Science Teacher, retires with 24 years of service. Joan Littlehale, Cicero Elementary Speech Teacher, retires with 29 years of service. Margaret McCullough, Lake Shore Elementary Teacher, retires with 20 years of service. Thomas McJilton, Junior High School Science Teacher, is retiring with 30 years of service. Helen Moore, Main Street Special Education Teacher, retires with 36 years of service. Melissa Morzek, Main Street Teaching Assistant, retires with 11 years of service. Cheryl Netto, Food Service Worker at Lake Shore Road, retires with 15 years of service. Gary Netto, Custodian 2 at Lake Shore Road Elementary, retires with 39 years of service. Karen Perrot, Typist 1 at Transportation, is retiring with 11 years of service. Nancy Oberson, CNS Science Teacher, is retiring with 30 years of service. Sharon Smith, Roxborough Road Middle School Teaching Assistant, retiring with 24 years of service. Brenda Vergino, is a CNS Teaching Assistant, retires with 32 years of service. Sharon Walker, Cicero Elementary Teacher, is retiring with 22 years of service. And Colleen Wickert, from Roxborough Road Elementary School PE Teacher, retires with 29 years of service. It's always interesting to see how many we get, as we approach time when we get retirements. And I did the math, combined, this is a 735 and 1/2 years of service to the North Syracuse Central School District that we are losing. And that's just gonna be, you know, impossible to replace, that kind of experience. So we wish all of these individuals a very happy and healthy retirement, and on their next endeavors. So congratulations to all of them. Moving on to personnel. Do we need an executive session before we take Personnels A and B? Do I have a motion to take A and B as a group? Mike Leone, Mary Scanlon, all in favor? That is unanimous. I would like to make the motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association, to review two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Patrick, all in favor? That's unanimous. Students, if you're here for a pick, you can bring up your sheets, and we can sign them for you. Thanks.